Good afternoon. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We are joined by Councilman Eric Costello, member of the committee. To my right, Councilman Ryan Dorsey. To my left. And we have the following people from different agencies. We have Michelle Toth from Law, Ben Guthorn from DLR, Hannah Nagle from DLR, and Nina Themelis from the mayor's office. And I'm not sure who else has testified on this bill. But without further ado, I'll turn it over to DLR. Let you guys introduce this bill and explain to us what we got.
So, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Ben Guthorn. I'm the Acting Director of the Department of Legislative Reference. Council Bill 230354 is a further revision to the Administrative Procedure Act, originally passed in 2020 and fully implemented over the past two years. We've been working diligently with the Department of Law to really put this into action and through that process have come to the position that some further tinkering is necessary to actually bring our process up to speed to match and to make this process truly efficient and effective. And with that, I want to hand that over to Hannah Nagle, who is our chief regulations staff member. And we'll go from there.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for having us. So this bill essentially aligns internal processes between law and DLR to work more efficiently together. Essentially, it switches who does what first. Currently, agencies work with the Law Department to draft regulations initially. And then they go to the 30-day public notice and comment period. And then if they pass the comment period or there are no comments, they are then promulgated and filed with DLR. At that point, that is the first point at which DLR can actually edit the regulations that have to adhere to the style guide, the Comar style guide that we've adopted for city regulations. What tends to happen is we have a lot of editing that has to take place on the back end that would be infinitely more efficient if it could take place on the front end. So this bill formally makes that change and also establishes a centralized city register of pending regulations that will be a monthly document distributed by DLR. And then, Michelle? Michelle is my counterpart in the Law Department, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department. As I stated in my report, not only does the current form of the APA result in inefficiencies, there are some issues when law is required to try and format in Comar style because I'm not an expert in it and neither are most agency heads. So by the time it gets to Hannah, it is an existing regulation and she has to go back and try and reformat it, which sometimes borders on a substantive change. That creates a problem because either the change cannot be made or the regulation has to go back up for another 30 days of public comment, which the agencies are typically not inclined to do. In addition, the notice process is somewhat cumbersome because we have to enlist the help of BSIT and the Enoch Pratt Public Library in order to post notice of proposed regulations in all of the necessary places. So this would streamline the process. Notice would be the same for everyone and you would know where to find it easily.
So I'm not sure who's here for which bill. So is there anybody else who was planning on speaking on this bill? Okay, so any questions in the committee?
Mr. Chair, there are just a few amendments to the bill. I believe council staff has them and they should be distributed.
Okay, can you tell us what those amendments are?
Yeah, so these are just a few things that we thought more about after the fact. Essentially, these align some obsolete language. We changed the use of the term "plain English" to the term "plain language" to align with other parts of the code. We changed the term "statutory" to the term "legal," also to align with other parts of the code. We did catch an oversight wherein we indicated in the first draft of the bill that DLR would be editing content. We will not be editing content, so we are changing the term "content" to "style." And then we added an additional provision wherein a preliminary form that we would require agencies to submit when they begin the promulgation process to send that to law so they can do an initial check for legal sufficiency and making sure that the enabling authority is correctly being applied to promulgate the regulations. So those are our proposed changes.
Okay. Can you give us like just one on-the-ground example that this is going to help? Like of something you've encountered in your time that we're solving here?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think one of the biggest issues that we run into when DLR is having to edit after the fact is an issue of a false imperative. So all regulations assign responsibilities, what the city has to do and what citizens have to do. And a lot of the times, when a regulation lands on my desk, it will say something, for example, like sidewalks shall be kept clear of debris. So we've clearly assigned a responsibility, but we do not have an entity that's responsible for doing that. Looking at that from a legal perspective, it gets a little murky. We don't want anybody to be having to deduce or infer anything when they're reading regulations. So if nothing else, this will improve any ambiguity that exists in regulations that are being promulgated.
Gotcha. And is there any unintended consequences that you can foresee taking place from this bill?
We've assessed it to be fiscally and operationally neutral. The only thing agencies will have to do is work with me instead of Michelle initially and submit one additional one-page form when they start the process. But Michelle, if there's anything you want to add?
We are not aware of any negative impacts from the amendments.
Gotcha. Okay. Anybody want to testify on this bill? Nope. No questions? All right, well, thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, Hannah. And we will put it to a vote at the end of next hearing because we don't have a quorum yet.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
But hopefully it moves forward. Thank you. I will turn it over to the bill sponsor to give us an introduction to this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing I want to do is give thanks to Roz and the staff at DLR for her work in particular, to put together a 60-page-long bill and to draft 24 amendments responsive to an extensive report from the Law Department. And to give thanks to Jeff Hochstetler and Law Department for writing and so thoroughly reviewing this lengthy bill that is multifaceted and catching all these needs for changes here and there. And to the other folks in the Finance Department who championed the need for this bill, the folks who are today administering business licenses that is essentially a function that's entirely outside of the mission and purpose of the Finance Department and the staff who know that the city of Baltimore will be better off if this is given to somebody in an office that is dedicated specifically to this purpose of licensing and its correlating function, consumer protections. And to Sarah Gross and the staff also in the Law Department pursuing affirmative litigations for their work in recognizing the importance of being granted the authority that this bill grants to pursue affirmative litigation in ways that we are empowered by the state but which require local legislation in order to actually accept that power, which this bill does. This bill, as I kind of just touched on, it is multifaceted. It's modeled on successful, other successful jurisdictions establishing a central and dedicated point of administration and oversight of business licensing, including the processing and recording of applications in collaboration with other relevant entities as may be necessary, such as the Health Department or the Department of Transportation or others who may have some role in assisting the process of licensing successfully. In addition, this also necessitates the conducting of enforcement actions and hearings subsequent to investigations and findings of alleged violations. And generally, the Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protections creates for the public a central repository for reports and complaints of wrongdoing by businesses that are licensed and acting outside of the terms of their licensure or are operating without a license that they should otherwise or are otherwise actually legally required to have. Centralizing and professionalizing business licensing and the protection of consumers will enable the city to better assist citizens in need, make it easier for businesses to interact with the city in complying with the existing laws and regulations, and for the Law Department to take critical action to respond to existing and emerging consumer protection matters. The Law Department was good enough to provide an extensive list of cases that have garnered significant revenues for local jurisdictions throughout the country in recent years as a result of undertaking affirmative litigation in cases where corporations have done harm and held and conducted themselves in a deceptive manner toward the public. And it is pursuing of fines against these corporations that functions as both a revenue generator for the city that can help offset the costs of the existence of this office as well as the fines themselves, serving as a deterrent to those corporations so that they would discontinue their illegal and deceptive practices. I shared this list of cases that the Law Department provided. I also shared a breakdown of kind of the structure of the bill with the committee members. It is 60 pages long. It is 60, more than 60 pages long in the unofficial reprint that DLR also put together for us to incorporate the 24 amendments that were drafted. So it is long, but it can be broken down into some kind of digestible sections. It is, a significant portion of it is simply the copying of significant sections of existing code for the need to change two or three words in a whole page of text. So there is a lot of just page space that is eaten up. I want to give my thanks to Nina Themelis for diligently pursuing the agency reports for this. I am, I say this also with the caveat that I'm a bit unnerved by having only received the DOT and Finance reports today, having vigorously pursued these reports for months and had done so in the hope that any conversation at all could be held between myself and these agencies in advance of them submitting these reports to understand their findings. For one example, I would question why the Finance Department's report makes no mention of the revenues that we already bring in through fees, which have to legally be tied to the cost of administering licenses. So, you know, I have questions about these reports, certainly also about the Department of Transportation's request for certain amendments that I don't think make any sense. But that is my introduction for this bill, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any and all questions. I did just earlier provide a little three-column breakdown to help the committee try to correlate the amendments to specific pages in the unofficial reprint from DLR as well as correlate where their explanations can be found, primarily in the Law Department's report. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, one last thing. I just, I want to say thanks to a number of folks who have submitted testimony and support, not the least of whom are the Montgomery County Office of Consumer Protections and Licensing, as well as the State of Maryland from the Office of the Attorney General from their Consumer Protection Division, who are in full support of this bill. I believe that the public will greatly benefit from the better professionalizing of the operations of business licensing and oversight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And before we go over to each of the agencies, I do want to echo one of the sentiments about the bill reports. I was told that these bill reports would be in long before this hearing. It's my understanding that the Finance Report was just submitted like 10 minutes ago. Is that accurate? No? When was the Finance Report submitted?
The Finance Report was submitted yesterday. So I will acknowledge and apologize for the lateness of our report. Due to the nature of the bill, we, there was a lot of back and forth that we did do internally with agencies to understand the impact, as well as with the Law Department, the agencies that were doing licensing, and Montgomery's, Montgomery County's office. So I will acknowledge and apologize greatly for the lateness of the report, but do want to acknowledge the extensive work with those agencies we had to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's definitely challenging when navigating a bill like this. I think everybody on, everybody here is supportive of protecting consumers and the intent of the consumer protection portion of this bill. But this bill, the smallest part of this bill is consumer protection and the largest part is creating an entity, another city agency, that would have a huge fiscal impact, would cause a lot of confusion for people rather than its intent to streamline processes. It actually creates more bureaucracy and gives agencies that have the expertise the ability to say, oh, I'm sorry, it's not on us. Go talk to this, you know, newly-formed group that is just a handful of people that are appointed to serve as volunteers that are also given a crazy amount of power. For a group to have subpoena power of local businesses is a tremendous responsibility, one that should not be taken lightly. And Baltimore City already has the perception that it is not business-friendly and creating more red tape and more difficulties for the business community to obtain the most basic communication and permitting and with the city is already a challenge and one that will only be further exacerbated. And so not having these bill reports makes it very challenging to just understand that big picture. We see the amount of vacancies we have across the board with bureau heads and department heads and many other levels in government, in Baltimore City government. And then to be creating a new entity while all of that is going on certainly is something that this council and this committee should at least have the full picture on what we're looking at. So with that, I will turn it over to the Law Department first and then we'll go agency by agency.
Thanks, Councilman Schleifer. Jeff Hochstetler, on behalf of the Law Department. The Law Department does approve this bill for formal legal sufficiency with the amendments that we suggested in our report and that I have reviewed and I think were provided to the committee. As a real brief legal overview, this bill does do five things. It establishes the new Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protection. It establishes the Business Licensing and Consumer Protection Board. It prohibits, for the first time, a broad swath of unfair, abusive, and deceptive trade practices in city law. It's something that has existed at the state level and the city has been allowed to do for a very long time, but it never has until this bill. It transfers a variety of existing business licensing and consumer protection responsibilities from other city agencies to this new department. And it establishes an administrative complaint investigation and enforcement scheme related to both the business licensing and the consumer protection parts of this bill. I'll also refer to the testimonial from Sarah Gross in our Affirmative Litigation Division. That's included in the Law Department's report. Affirmative Litigation Division strongly supports this bill because it provides new opportunities to hold bad business actors responsible who engage in unfair, abusive, and deceptive trade practices and allows the Law Department, both working with this new department and on its own initiative, to request injunctive relief and seek penalties from these bad actors, which in other jurisdictions have led to actually great amounts of money but which the city has not been able to join in yet because it hasn't had a local law of this kind. So with that, yes, we approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency and support the bill and approve the amendments.
If you can just clarify one thing for me because it seemed like there's two, like as you outlined, there's different components to this. Does this bill need to create a new department and a new board in order to seek affirmative litigation? Or is it just those components, the subpoena power and the consumer protection pieces of the bill that are necessary?
The way that many consumer protection regimes are set up across the state and in other counties is through dedicated offices and departments that set up an administrative function to hear complaints, act as kind of a quasi-judicial entity that can pursue investigations fully, you know, issue subpoenas if it needs information to conduct those investigations. So certainly, a robust administrative division like the new department here would be, would probably be the fullest partner in the powers that the city might like to have to go to, you know, investigate and potentially seek relief against these bad actors.
You know, other governments have their government structured differently. And so I understand how other agency, how other governments break down their agencies and who's responsible for what. But the question is, does Baltimore City need to have a dedicated department solely for business licensing in order to be able to seek affirmative litigation and to do the consumer protection pieces we're looking to do? Or can they do that if there is another agency or group, whether it's the Law Department or somebody else tasked with that same function?
Councilman, I know I'm here prepared to testify on this bill. That's a question I can get back to you on. There are two separate components, the business licensing and the consumer protection parts here. I think for, you know, a lot of policy reasons, which I would defer to, you know, you and your colleagues and other agencies on, it makes sense to combine those two in this bill, as this bill has done.
The question is, is it required? Is it necessary? Do you have to have both components? Or can you just have one component and then still be able to seek affirmative litigation?
There may still be a legal question if there needs to be a department or an administrative office that kind of works in tandem with the Law Department to do investigations, but I'm not sure it would have to include a licensing function.
Okay, thank you. Finance? Oh, Councilman Costello, you got a question for law?
Yeah, is this, maybe the question's for DLR, but is this two different legislative topics? Is this one?
Yeah, I would defer to DLR. That has not been a concern that's been raised among law or DLR, as far as I'm concerned.
Ben Guthorn, Acting Director of DLR. We saw this as one in the same, part and parcel. As you can see, Montgomery County and plenty of other jurisdictions across the country and within the state, these topics are always covered, generally speaking, within the same department or within the same executive branch.
Got it. Thank you. And second question, well, go ahead. I'll wait until the agencies.
You can call the department?
No, it's for the mayor's office. I can wait.
Finance?
Finance?
Good evening. Mara James, Assistant Budget Director for the Budget Office. I am, so the Department of Finance conducted a fiscal analysis of legislation. We estimate that the cost of implementation, including the current services that we are already doing as well around licensing, as well as the expanded services for consumer protection, would be up to $3 million. This includes really a net impact of up to $1.76 million for the general fund. Currently, in the code, there are numerous business licenses that are split across various agencies, which is, which does make it complicated for implementation. This legislation really centralizes all of those into one department. Finance does a lot of this licensing already in the Bureau of Revenue Collections. And as Councilmember Dorsey mentioned, we are supportive of that action to centralize these actions and move them out of Finance. And so we expect that that aspect of the legislation would really be budget-neutral or have minimal fiscal impact. The additional costs in our analysis really come from the new service of this legislation around consumer protections. We based our analysis around the model in Montgomery County. And so on that, we estimate that there'd be an additional 12 staff for a cost of $1.4 million for personnel, as well as up to about $362,000 for non-personnel costs. Now, this includes not a consumer complaint case management software that would need to be either acquired or built and that initial uptake cost, as well as ongoing maintenance costs. Office space, considering the work of this office, would be very public-facing. We would need to consider that space and have it be the right size for the staffing. And then costs around really fleet, since we'll have people going out looking at investigators and licensing on this. We strongly support the intent of this legislation to provide really important services to the public. And we recognize that there are benefits for the city and residents that are really hard to quantify in our analysis. And we also recognize that the city can realize revenue through affirmative litigation, but we also, but we want to note that that revenue is not a guarantee. We can't budget based on possible settlements or possible rulings that would come in. We are really open to working on identifying ways to reduce estimated costs, possibly looking at ways of consolidating other areas, reducing the number of staff, shifting vacant positions that are in agencies that are currently doing this licensing to this new department to cover these increased costs. However, due to the costs, we do have to oppose this legislation. And I do want to note, based on Councilman Dorsey's question before about fees, I don't know if you'd like me to answer that now?
Can you backtrack? What'd you say? You said you guys support or oppose the legislation?
Oppose.
You oppose the legislation?
Yes, due to the cost.
Okay.
Would you like me to answer Councilman Dorsey's comment and question and his introduction about fees and the impact there? Or wait until after agency reports?
I mean, you want to ask a question directly to Finance?
Yeah, I think Mara understands the question. How much, how much have we, are we bringing in in fees for licensing each year?
Right now, since fiscal 2019, we've been bringing in, on average, 700, I mean, 760,000 annually in fees from licensing.
That's for all licenses, all businesses that the city licenses to operate?
Yes. All that's within Bureau, that Bureau of Revenue Collections is managing and we bring in through there, yeah.
And does that fully cover the cost of administering those licenses?
So looking at the, as the budgeted costs that we have for that, for that service... So, looking at the, as the budgeted costs that we have for that, for that service in Bureau Revenue Collections, we budget that at about 1.3 million.
1.6, but we're only bringing in like 700,000?
We budget it at 1.3 million for personnel and that additional, yes, for operating costs of that stuff, and we are only bringing in 760,000 annually.
Just to make sure we're being real clear here, you say we budget, you mean you're costing out in this report, or are you talking about in the FY '24 budget?
This report and...
Okay, in the FY '24 budget?
Yes.
We are not covering the cost of licensing through licensing fees?
We, it's a complicated thing. We will project out for that, but we actually receive annually the actual revenue that we get since fiscal 2019 is, on average, 760,000.
Uh huh.
I can provide more...
We would necessarily, though, when you talk about in your report, which again, I've only had an opportunity to scan, I got it after, I got it at five minutes to four o'clock When you talk about the potential strategy of moving folks from wherever they are now administering licenses or moving their positions into this, that would seem legally necessary to do, not an option, right? Because those fees are directly tied to, like, we don't have a right to collect a fee except for to cover the cost of administering licenses.
So, I want to guess differentiate that the increased cost that we're discussing in our report is mainly related to the consumer protection aspect of the bill, and if we aren't charging fees for that aspect, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I think this speaks to Councilman Costello's question, that these aren't two different topics. They aren't two different subjects, and that's why they're put under one roof in this office and as in other offices of its sort, that there is essentially no public interest in licensing businesses except to protect consumers in the business marketplace, right? We license businesses to make sure that consumers are protected against those businesses acting in a way that is harmful to the public. And so the fees that we collect for licensing should cover all aspects of our ability to conduct everything related to that, and that means having the staff in order to intake complaints, to intake reports of wrongdoing, to undertake the investigations that would need to be done when complaints are received, and that's all consumer protections work. So I can't, I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to say is that our fees should be set at a level that adequately covers our ability to do everything that's related to the purpose of licensing, which is protection of consumers.
I would, I would guess defer to the Law Department to confirm that interpretation of the fees and how they can be structured and applied to include that, and if, and we can go back and look at what really, what would that impact, and would the licensing fees really have to change to cover, how to change to cover that.
Are there any new fees being created in this bill?
No.
Okay, so the revenues would be the same with or without the bill, correct?
Correct. I think what Councilmember Dorsey is saying, that we would be able to change the fees...
I'm saying, if we left the fees alone, this bill isn't raising fees, is it?
This bill itself is not raising fees, but the Finance Department has long talked about a reassessment of the fines and fee structures of the city. This also does grant the city authority to issue fines for things for which we cannot presently issue fines, namely violations of licensing and consumer protection laws.
So, so this isn't creating any new fees, and so therefore, the revenues would be the same with or without this bill taking place, correct? Mara?
Correct. And I will say, Councilmember Dorsey, I apologize for missing that point before, that we could be doing fines on this. When we spoke to, I should note that, we spoke to Montgomery County's office, they collected in fiscal '22, $3,000 from those additional fines in revenue. So like, there is, I don't, it's a small amount, but I don't want to not acknowledge that that can come through as well.
Yeah. All right, so while we, while we think about where we would spend that additional $3,000 in revenue, I'll turn it over to Rec. Parks for...
I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. What?
It's on.
It's on. It's on. Oh, it's on mute?
You're on, you're good.
I could, I could hear me.
You're good, go ahead.
We stand by our report.
And what does your report say?
It says that we don't find any, hold on, let me read you what my report says.
That's what I just said.
Said subtitle 71, "14 Calls for BCRP Along With Other Named City Agencies From Time To Time Certify the Police Commissioner for Names of Employees of Their Respective Departments for Appointment of the Police Commissioner as Special Event or Special Enforcement Officers." As Baltimore City Recreation Parks finds no issue with this request, we support this legislation.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for passing over you guys, but does the Mayor's Office have anything they'd like to contribute?
Well, we were going to speak on behalf of a few agencies that weren't able to attend this evening, so...
And which are those agencies?
We have Ethics, the Health Department, and the Fire Department. And then we also have DHCD present.
Okay, so would you like to speak on behalf of those agencies?
Sure. So Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Ethics Board doesn't take a position on the bill. The bill's financial disclosure requirements are consistent with ethics, laws, substance, and administration, so no position from Ethics. From the Health Department, they are in support of the legislation, and the Health Department currently doesn't oversee licensing operations that would fall under the purview of a newly-created department, so they're in support in general. And then the Fire Department has no opposition to the legislation.
Gotcha. And what about the Police Department? I don't see them here.
I don't, I don't know that the Police Department was referred to legislation.
Why, why weren't they referred to legislation?
I'm not certain the Council President's office is responsible for making referrals.
I think, because in reading the bill, there's quite a few instances where this bill would remove certain authorities now that the Police Commissioner has, and it would turn that authority over to this newly-formed group. And so I'm just a little surprised that it would be referred to the Fire Department, which obviously has far smaller role and impact in this bill than the Police Department, which I believe would have one of the greatest impacts along with Finance and DOT and a couple others. So that's a little troubling, but we'll look into that. I appreciate you providing that information. Stephanie from DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. We had the opportunity to review this bill, and we believe that it may lessen some of the administrative and operational duties currently housed within DHCD and allow our staff to focus their energy and attention on more pressing issues central to our mission. We believe that centralization may result in consumers being better protected and licensing processes being made more efficient. We're available to assist the department and board as necessary to carry out their duties, and we respectfully stand by our bill report, which we defer to the Department of Finance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So with you guys having less responsibilities with this bill, are you guys going to be relinquishing some Housing Department positions to contribute towards this new, newly-formed department?
I don't believe we'll be relinquishing any positions, but we will still be available to assist with any inspections as necessary.
Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify, the role that really Housing does on several of these licenses is to be inspecting and then referring to the Department of Finance on that, so it's, they really more have inspector positions rather than licensing on a lot of these.
Okay, thank you. Environmental Control Board?
Good afternoon. So, the Environmental Control Board has no objection. We don't see there being much of an impact really on our agency. I did note two things that I wanted to point out. It's mentioned in my memorandum. Basically, yeah, in order for there to be a jurisdiction, in order for our agency to have jurisdiction over a violation, it has to be listed under 40-14, and the bill amendment does not include unfair abuse or deceptive trade practices as a violation under 40-14. It has it for 41-14, so that a civil citation can be issued, but not 40-14 for an environmental citation to be issued. So I just recommend that it be included in 40-14 so that it's under the ECB's jurisdiction. The other thing I noticed in the bill where it talks about 41-14 and includes unfair abuse or deceptive trade practices, it says that it's under Article II, subtitle 42, but I believe it's Article II, subtitle 4. So that's a typographical issue, so just wanted to bring that to anyone's attention. I know there are several amendments, I haven't seen them, so I just wanted to make sure it was on the record, so that'd be addressed. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. DPW?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We reviewed the bill that's being heard today, and in checking through the bill, we came to the determination that any of the transferring of these oversight responsibilities would not impact any of the enforcement activities that we in DPW accomplish, so we have no objection to the bill. We did want to point out that there may be an error regarding Section 42-29A3. It's on page 12, line 24 of the bill. It's stating that once the director substantiates an allegation and a complaint, one of the actions the director may take is to issue an environmental citation. The Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protections, however, would employ special enforcement officers who may issue civil citations but not environmental citations. According to Article I, Section 40-7(c)(1) of the Code, an environmental citation can only be issued by a code enforcement officer and administratively adjudicated by the Environmental Control Board. Any penalties to be applied to the substantiated allegation would need to be enumerated as well. So we just wanted, in our reading of the bill, we felt that was an issue, so we just wanted to raise it to the committee.
Yeah, that is, that is confusing. Bill sponsor, would you like to speak on that?
I'm sorry, was this in the Public Works bill report? Is this noted?
Yes.
It is noted in the bill report. I'm sorry, I didn't...
It's at the bottom, in our report for, just to help you, is at the bottom, the last paragraph on page two.
The, the bill authorizes the creation of special enforcement officers but not code enforcement officers?
No, the, it references that the director of this new department could, once they substantiate, he or she substantiates a complaint, one of their actions that he or she could take would be to issue an environmental citation. However, they're employing special enforcement officers, and only code enforcement officers can issue an environmental citation according to the code, and I cited in our response those sections. So something would need to be corrected, either there would need to be a way to remove that roadblock or recognize...
If the Law Department thinks that this is an issue, I happily have them tell me it needs to be corrected. My understanding of special enforcement officers is a title that's quite broad in its scope and that is inclusive of any and all duties that are given to a special enforcement officer pursuant to the powers of the police granted to Baltimore City.
The Law Department report does talk about this on page three, and special enforcement officer, the term special enforcement officer does include both a code enforcement officer and a regular enforcement officer. So I could read this part if that would, if that would help. Regarding the issuance of environmental and civil citations, such citations can be issued for violations of a variety of city laws as enumerated in Article I, Sections 4014e and 4114. Because a number of those laws either directly or indirectly pertain to consumer protection, business licensing, it would be logical to authorize department personnel to issue such citations. The bill achieves this by adding the department's director to the list of officials in City Code Article 19, Section 71-1, who may certify employee names to the Police Commissioner for appointment as special enforcement officers. And then, in then Code Article 1 of 47, says that environmental citations can be issued by a quote code enforcement officer, and 40-1-sub-C says, defines code enforcement officer as a special enforcement officer appointed under Article 1971-1. It's all very circular and referential, but, or self-referential, but I do believe the bill includes the director as somebody who could, who could certify employees to issue environmental citations and civil citations.
Okay. I certainly yield to the Law Department. Thank you.
Yeah, that is a little confusing, but I guess we'll get to that, get some clarity later on. So is all business licensing, is this a one-stop shop? Every single thing a business needs in order to be properly licensed and communicating with the city so they're authorized to legally operate their businesses? All of that, all-inclusive in this proposed agency?
Chair Slifer, I believe most of what this bill does is transfer certain licensing functions from an existing agency to this agency. I don't, I don't believe it creates a lot of new processes there, but I would defer to the sponsor.
So, yeah, I guess my question is, why wouldn't it just include every single business license and all the licensing that would be necessary for any business so that it is an actual one-stop shop?
That is what it is.
So every single business license that any business needs to operate can be obtained through this one agency?
Let me see if I can clarify this. We modeled this based on Montgomery County. The alternative kind of model that one could make an example of is Philadelphia. Philadelphia has an office that issues its licenses to trade workers, electricians, plumbers, HVAC, anybody who does licensed trade work. And then because they issue the license to do trade work, they decide we also issue the permits to do trade work jobs. And then because they do the trade work inspections, they also, issue the trade work permits, they also do the trade work inspections. And then because they do the trade work inspections, they decide, we'll just do all inspections. And so their office also does all of their housing code enforcement inspections and everything. So they go from the perspective of we issue licenses to businesses, all the way to we do all things inspections for code enforcement. The Montgomery County model is to start with, we issue licenses to businesses, not trade business, not, not trade work. We issue the licenses to businesses to operate here, and because consumer protections is kind of the sister component that's at the heart of why we issue licenses to businesses, we put consumer protections all under that one office, and essentially all licensing of all businesses that...
So does this include all trade work?
It does not include trade work. It is the Montgomery County model, not the Philadelphia model.
Okay, I'm just saying from, I'm sure each one of our offices gets a variety of different complaints. The complaints that I hear as far as consumer protection usually involves trade work, whether it be somebody remodeling their home, building a deck, whatever it may be. And that's where I've seen a lot of consumers need protection, and they ultimately end up going to the Attorney General. up going to the Attorney General's Office, and they've been very great about handling those cases and successful with that. I still believe that, that the city should have a mechanism to, to have consumer protection as well, and we have wonderful agencies, and we have a great law department that is very capable of, of performing a lot of those functions, rather than just giving some appointees carte blanche subpoena power and other authority to go after whatever businesses they choose they should be going after, when we have a lot of talented agencies sitting right in front of us that have the expertise in their individual departments, and that is why the structure is the way that it, it currently is. Councilman Costello, did you have a question?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Can I just go back to the original question? It piqued my curiosity. Does this bill cover the transfer of all business licenses that one can obtain from the city to this one office?
He already, he already answered that and said no.
It's a yes?
He said no, it doesn't. Yeah, it doesn't have like the trade, you're talking about like the trades?
No, 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 not permits, like licensing, right? Like DOT could issue a, an outdoor seating permit, or the finance department can issue a late-night commercial operations permit. Although, the health department can issue a low, medium, or high-grade food license. Do all of those things, are those, are those covered in this? Just yes?
One of those three is, and there is good reason for that. That the late-night commerc-- the late-night commercial operating license is covered in this, and that's a really good example of something that got stuck with finance, who didn't want it, because there was no other entity that was better dedicated to the purpose of licensing. So, finance has been stuck with that and many other things for years that they never wanted. The health things fall under, explicitly under the authority given to the Health Commissioner, so only the health department can do certain things that have to be done by the health department. And the third one you asked about was like street.
Outdoor seating.
Outdoor seating. That falls under the Department of Transportation's authority to grant, what are they called? Right-of-way permits for, right-of-way permits for minor privilege.
Got it, so?
So, to answer your question, Councilman Costello, if a business calls your office, or any of our offices, and says, we have a business licensing or permitting question, whatever it may be, the answer is no, they can't just go to this one agency. It would still depend, and the list in the bill of what is included, I think there's twenty-five subtitles that, that include the items that were selected that are included in this bill.
But, that's in the, that's in the, like, where's that list? Sorry.
Page seven of the bill.
Page, thank you, perfect.
Okay, and since we started talking about right-of-ways and others, we are now up to DOT.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to be clear, and Liam Davis, Legislative Affairs Manager, City Department of Transportation. We are fully in support of the intent of the legislation from a consumer protection standpoint. However, there are some concerns, just from the perspective of city DOT, so our position is support with amendment. We do have concerns regarding language focused on street vendors and trespass towing. To get into that, specific to trespass towing, the Trespass Tow Board is currently administered by the City Department of Transportation, and we have been working very hard over the past year, actually even longer than that, to work on trespass tow board reform. We are making steady progress. Our concern is, we may lose momentum if that is taken from the authority of City Department of Transportation. Regarding street vendors, it's important to keep in mind that street vendors are often located within the public right-of-way, and that really is City Department of Transportation's domain. In addition, they are closely aligned with the agency's existing responsibilities of special events permitting and coordination. Additionally, based off some of the conversation here today, I don't believe the agency is in a position to give up staff to support a new agency. If anything, we need more staff. A number of folks here are aware of our new curbside commercial policy. These positions are critical from an oversight perspective, and we don't want to lose them. Regarding the bill report timing, I do want to apologize on behalf of the agency for us submitting today. However, I do want to be clear, we struggled, it, it's hard for us to submit a bill report when, on a timely manner, when there's language that isn't clear in the, in the legislation, and it wasn't until earlier this month that we got clarification on the street vendors portion of the legislation. So, that's all I will say. We will always strive to do a better job, but again, it's hard for me to get concise feedback from our internal divisions when there's a lot of moving amendments that I actually haven't even seen yet. So, thank you for your time, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for DOT?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, it, I guess, I'm struggling with this, so I understand that street vendors operate in the street, and that DOT is in charge of the street. But, you know, while DOT sets up regulations for where I can and can't park my car, DOT doesn't license me to own a car, or to be able to drive a car, period. That's left to an entity that is a professional entity who's dedicated to the purpose of that form of licensing. And so, where I see DOT's role in licensing street vendors is in making a clear determination about where they can and cannot operate, and that it makes more sense for the licensing of those vendors to be left up to an entity that is professionalized for the purpose of that licensing, and is fully empowered in ways that DOT is not empowered to enforce the need to be licensed and the terms of the licensing. Similarly, with trespass towing, while it is a thing that deals with cars, and cars are often generally associated with the Department of Transportation and what it does, the Department of Transportation doesn't license, doesn't issue a permit to operate a repair facility for cars. The license, the Department of Transportation doesn't issue a permit for the land use to operate a parking garage for cars, and it's, it's only very tangential that DOT would have anything to do with trespass towing, only because there's just a, it's cars. There's not any necessarily logical thing. And I'll give an example from a real-world legislative experience, is that when, in the last term, I was looking at the operation and oversight of commercial parking facilities, I realized that there was no entity in the code statutorily tasked with the duty of administering any of the oversight of commercial parking facilities. And so, I, I went to the finance department, and I said to the finance department, you guys should be in charge of administering this, because like, like night commercial operating licenses, these fines, these, these fees for the application are paid to you. The application to have this kind of business is submitted to you, so you should be the entity. And Steve Kraus said, no, we don't want it. We only got stuck with the special op, the, the late-night commercial operating license because there was nobody better to do it. You should give this to DOT. And I came to DOT, and DOT said, you're talking about commercial parking facilities. This is something that operates wholly on private property. We deal with things that occur in the public right-of-way. We can't write tickets for what happens on, on, on private property. We can only write tickets, our whole purview is about what happens in the public right-of-way. You should give this to the Department of Housing and Community Development, because it's on private property. And the Department of Housing and Community Development said, just because it's on private property doesn't mean it should be handed to us. This should probably be DOT, because it deals with cars, right? And the answer is, no, it shouldn't be any of these. It should be in the hands of a proper licensing entity, and that's exactly what the case is and should be with trespass towing and with street vendor licenses, that an entity that is dedicated to upholding the terms of licensure is who should be overseeing those who are licensed, and DOT should be focusing, focusing its energies on the constructing of our streets to make them safer for people. Engineering our street lights to the, traffic moves more efficiently.
So, Councilman, would this, would this board then require the scrapping of the existing boards, such as the towing board? Would the towing board no longer exist under this proposal?
That is correct, as would the auction board, the massage parlor board, and a number of other boards that have been created ad hoc over the course of the city's history, only due to the absence of a professionalized office for the purpose of business licensing and oversight.
And so, all of those responsibilities that have existed for, for many decades, and people with institutional knowledge would be transferred over to three people that the mayor selects, that would have majority of this board, to make decisions across the board on all of these functions. Is that correct?
Nominate and confirm, I believe, is the process of appointing people.
But the mayor can select, can select his three appointees, and those three appointees can make any determination they want on any of these topics listed in this bill.
Not without regard for the city council's will to confirm those appointments.
So, once they're confirmed, so the mayor makes appointees, once the council confirms those appointees, then those three people can essentially carte blanche make all of these decisions that all of these boards currently do?
That is how representative democracy works at every level of governments and government in the United States.
Gotcha. So, I mean, I think that's pretty scary that the mayor can, or any mayor can appoint three people to a board. There are requirements, they have to be city residents, that's great, but then they get subpoena power to subpoena any business in the city. That's a little troubling. But anyways, BCIT?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. BSC stands by its report, which basically states a couple of things. One, we estimated the incremental infrastructure cost to be up to forty thousand dollars. By incremental, we are assuming that we would use existing facilities, existing desktops, laptops of the people who are already in those roles. This will be totally for individuals that are incremental to the role to support the, the needs of this bill. The other item is regarding the, the software. We recognize that there is a need for software for case management, but also other systems that either people that are using today, that may be sufficient for the requirements of, of this new agency, as well as incremental software that's needed to manage and support the various functions. And to do that, we would just need a little more analysis to figure out what those costs would be.
Gotcha. Do you have an estimate of the ballpark?
We, when we look, when we look at, at case management, we recognize case management software could be anywhere from several thousand dollars to a couple hundred thousand dollars, depending upon the level of functionality. What we don't know, we need additional analysis time for, is what other pieces of software would be needed to support this function above and beyond what these organizations currently use today.
And how long would it take to build something like this out for this newly-formed, newly-created agency?
Can I get back to you on that?
Ballpark me, are we talking about a month? Are we talking about a year?
It would not, definitely not be a year. I think you're setting me up on that one.
No, I'm asking, I mean, it could be a month, it could be a year.
I would say two to three months to figure that out. The other thing we would need to figure out is how, as best as we can tell for now, how software needs to be integrated into existing systems as well, but that's the type of time we would need to kind of figure that out.
Which, that integration could take just as long as the first steps that you were talking about, if not longer.
I mean, to figure out the estimate is, is.
No, I'm talking about actually integrating those systems, because we're talking about selecting these twenty-four, twenty-five items, and working out that integration across multiple agencies. I assume that, that takes time as well.
It, it would take some time to, again, to figure out the estimate, how to build it, how to integrate it, that's sort of another story. Once you build the integration once, typically it can be reused, and you get efficiencies there.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Did, did you have a question for BCIT? Oh, okay. Is there any other agency that wish to speak? General questions, Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, maybe this is for the sponsor, or for the Law Department. I, in this list of items that would be under the office, I don't, I don't see where the police role would be removed, because I don't see them policing these entities now. Am I correct?
There are no active roles within the police department that would be affected by this in any way.
Right, which is probably why it wasn't assigned to the police department.
Yeah.
The second question I had was, the.
If I could.
Sure.
There are.
Actually, the, the chair should tell you, sure, not me.
Mr. Chair? Okay.
I mean, it seems like you guys are communicating, so go ahead.
There, there are throughout the code, things where power is given to the police department that has never been actualized, right? And a good example in consumer protections is in the consumer protections article is a section on second, second-hand goods sales. There's a thing that says that if you buy and sell used goods, other than books and records, I think, there might be one other category, if you sell, buy and sell used goods, you have to submit, and you have to have a license to do so, and you have to submit an applica, a, a form to the police department on each and every day on which you, during which you receive used goods. So, if a guy comes into my shop, and I buy a piece of stereo equipment to resell from him, resell to somebody else, I have to, that day, submit a form to the police department, just like a pawn shop does, only if you ask the police department, what about X, Y, and Z business? Say, a sneaker head shop that buys and sells high-end tennis shoes? Who do I talk to at the police department about the, the daily reports from the sneaker head shop here or there or there? They say, we don't take those reports. We only take in, through our pawn shop unit, that which is required of pawn shops under state law, even though the city law says that the requirement is to give such reports to the police department. So, by moving things like that out of the police department, we actually.
So by moving things like that out of the police department, we actually give it to somebody who will do the job that the law exists for in the first place.
So, on that note, because the police commissioner's role is mentioned numerous times in this bill, on page 21, when it comes to scrap collectors, which we sure have all dealt with, scrap collectors in our districts, and the question on whether or not the scrap that may or may not have been in someone's yard was up for grabs versus if it's private property, it says the permit to do so from the police commissioner and then Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protection. So, in a case like that, when there's an issue involving that, by removing, by adding this agency into that, who's ultimately responsible when there's an issue that comes up, when somebody says that a scrapper has taken stuff out of their property, they're not permitted, they don't have that license, who's, who does that go to? Does that go to the business licensing, or does that go to the police commissioner? As it has it on line 22.
Thank you for the question. So, in this case, like in any other, if there is something that, under law, requires you have, to have a license in order to engage in a certain behavior, then either violating the terms of that license or failing to get the license as required is something that is enforced and upheld by whomever the licensing entity may be.
So if somebody's scrapping something out of an alley and the police get there, are they allowed to take enforcement action, or does that need to be referred to the business licensing, it's Consumer Protection Division?
The police are always empowered to uphold any law.
So then why are we adding in this other function as opposed to just leaving it with the police department?
Because that's, because in this case, it's a matter of designing, receiving, and processing an application for a license.
And another thing, on the next paragraph, permits, application, and issuance, it also says on line 28 that it should be on the form that the police commissioner and then, no comma or anything, director of the Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protection provides. So are they providing two separate forms, or is it the form that currently exists? Are they creating a new partnered form? Which, how's that form going to work?
I'm sorry, can you reiterate where exactly you're referring to?
In the next paragraph, another place where the police commissioner is mentioned, it talks about the application, and it says that the application for a permit must be in the form that the police commissioner and then also director of Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protection provides. Are those two entities providing two separate permits? Are they agreeing on one? Is that being removed from the police department and given over to this business licensing entity?
I'm still unclear about where you... Can you give me a page and line number that you were referring to?
Page 28.
28?
Sorry, page 21, line, page 21, line 28.
Page 21, line 28 reads, be, it's preceded by, "An application for a permit under this subtitle must be on the form that..." and then we see in brackets, existing text, "Police Commissioner," brackets indicating that that language be struck, and then in all caps, "Director of the Department of Business Licensing and Consumer Protection provides."
So this does remove stuff from the police department?
It, as I just said, it removes the need for the police commissioner to design a form.
Okay. So then the bill does remove responsibilities and control that the police department currently has and turns it over to this newly-formed agency?
I mean...
I mean, that's what the bracket, that's what the brackets mean. I mean, you're replacing police commissioner in countless situations here. I mean, on each page, there's 1, 2, 3, the next page, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, So in just these three pages, and I'm sure it's in other places also, in just these three pages, there's controls that the police department currently has, which will then be removed based on this bill?
Yes.
Okay. I will now turn it over to public testimony, and then we can go back to...
I have another question.
Do you want to ask before the public testimony?
If I may?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. The other question that I had was, just going back to the conversation about...
...the possibility of moving testimony to Eric Friedman from Montgomery County.
My question is about the board, because we, well, my question's to the sponsors. So my question is, going back to the conversation around the board, the bill actually says that the board is five people. It's three appointed by the mayor, one appointed in consultation with the council president, and one nominated in consultation with the city comptroller. My understanding of how we're doing this is that, you know, with all of the list of the types of licensing that we are moving into this entity, and then also the consumer protection that we're doing, I mean, it's always been crazy to me that, like, the trespass towing board, the auction board, some of these other boards, had people who were in the field, that were on the board, that were policing themselves and their industry. And so this bill takes that away and says, "We're going to do this all from here." It doesn't, I mean, I would say that we probably want to amend the board composition to be maybe a little bit bigger, but, you know, and add some other qualifications, but I think that the main piece here is to take away the fact that the, these boards that are doing oversight are actually, you know, within the industry, and so they're not always going to actually be for the consumer. So the board, so for the chair...
Is there a question?
Excuse me, for the sponsor, I'm wondering, with your composition of the board here, would you be amenable to changing it slightly so that it's a little bit bigger, where the city council has, you know, some picks? And then also, this is, the board is on, the board is on page 8, so that, you know, people have confidence that, you know, there would be a broad spectrum of representation that could do the oversight of all of these entities, all of these various licensing and consumer protection pieces.
I'm happy, thank you for the question. I'm happy to discuss the board composition. I'll just, my general sense about boards is, bigger's not necessarily better. When...
I'm not talking about a 27-member board. I mean, we can work together on that.
I'm happy to discuss.
So Councilman, if you can just clarify your comments, the city has over 100 boards and commissions. Are you saying that the boards and commissions of the city that have oversight over the 100 different topics they have oversight of should not involve and include industry representatives?
There are, for instance, the trespass towing board. I was just amazed that, you know, several members of the trespass towing board were actually tow operators.
Are you amazed that there's...
And so, what I'm saying is that, you know, yes, you want to have the expertise, but the whole board shouldn't be the same, shouldn't be the same industry head. So that's all. I was just asking the question about the board.
But, I mean, my question is, if we're going to do that, then shouldn't that be consistent across the board? We have 100 boards and commissions. Should they remove industry representatives from those boards?
Well, I mean...
Or just the towing board?
No, I was just using the towing board as an example. I think that this, what this bill does is it takes the ones where industry is actually overseeing their own industry, in doing the work in terms of licensing. So like, for instance, you know, there's, trespass towing is the one I'm familiar with just because we had a bill about it. If there's a complaint about somebody who's been, you know, wronged by a tow agency, they would make the complaint to the trespass towing board, and they would make a decision whether or not that complaint is valid. That's different than an oversight board like the Hispanic Commission, which is designed to work on issues for our community, so that there's, you know, the city is actually working on behalf of our community. I mean, so...
So what about the school board?
So, I mean, the school board, they're not, people are making complaints to the school board for whatever it is, grievances or whatever. We don't actually control that. So, I mean, that's something that...
I'm just saying, like, these boards, I mean, there's a reason that you have industry representatives, so you have the expertise on them, whether it be any related, especially a lot of the housing boards and others, you need industry representatives. Otherwise, if the three people that whoever the mayor is chooses to sit on this all-encompassing board, you're expecting those three people to have expertise in all of these different functions while also being willing to serve as a volunteer and have that level of expertise. I'm just pointing out that we have a lot of boards and commissions that have represented, industry representatives, and for good reason. So, thank you. We will now move to public testimony as a request from the sponsor to hear virtual testimony. That was not something that I knew in advance as far as offering that. I will extend the courtesy, but in general, if we open that up, we have to open it up to anybody who's on, who's online. So after we hear from the bill sponsors' guest, we will then open it up to the two people that signed in, and then we'll go back online and answer anybody who wishes to testify online or over the phone. What's your guest's name?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Friedman from Montgomery County is with us, and I want to thank him for being here with us and ready to give testimony.
Good evening. Hope you're able to hear me, and congratulations to the council for introducing a bill and having such an interesting conversation and discussion regarding the various challenges. More than 50 years ago, when Montgomery County created its new charter, one of the first acts that the new county council took was to establish a local consumer protection office in Montgomery County. And in listening to your discussion this evening, I can really get a better idea of the challenges that you're facing. What's interesting is that our office, the local government consumer protection office created over 50 years ago, we grew up together with all the other agencies in Montgomery County. And it sounds like that you're wrestling with the challenges of how do you create a local government consumer protection office now? Because we grew up together collaborating. And so that's really the trick that makes it work, I think, is that we, our office, the local consumer protection office, is held within the public safety sector of Montgomery County governments. Our office, the consumer protection, is grouped together with the police department, the fire department, the sheriff's office, state's attorney, emergency management, homeland security, and we all work together because we all know that silos are the killers. Residents in any county, they don't care what agency was, didn't help them, or which organization they need to talk to, they just look at us as the government. And so the very most important thing for all of us is the challenge of working together and not working in silos. So we've been doing that with all the different agencies for 31 years, I'm sorry, 51 years. We work together with the police department, we work together with the sheriff's office, we work together with Department of Transportation, all the same things that I have heard you discussing today. And so I just hope that we can help you with, as you continue to wrestle with these questions. You know, the Attorney General's Office, Consumer Protection Division does great work, but we have to keep in mind that local agencies can do a better job at the level than the Attorney General's Office can do, the Federal Trade Commission can do, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau can do. This is what the beauty is with consumer protection. So I'm there to answer any questions that you might have now or in the future, and just, you know, want to express that consumer protection clearly is not anti-business. It actually helps businesses. It helps them to compete on a level playing field. Keep in mind that scammers do not discriminate. They're happy to take advantage of rich, poor people, educated, uneducated, doesn't make a difference. It's all, it's all something that we want to work together, and it affects the quality of life, it's a public safety issue, and greatly appreciate that, and I look forward to working with you and answering any questions that you might have now or in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman, for joining us. Can you just tell us what your agency's budget is and how many employees do you have?
Our budget for FY '24 is 2.6 million. We have 19 people.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Friedman. Thank you for joining us. We'll now turn it over to public testimony. I have two people signed up, and then after those two, anybody else who wishes to testify may do so. And the first one up I have here is Charles Parrish. Can you come up to the microphone? You have to push the button on the right until you see it light up red, and then just lift the microphone up a little bit. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee and council members and agency members. My name is Charles Parrish. I've been a lifelong resident or employee at one-time Fire Department of Baltimore City and have operated businesses in Baltimore City. For the last four decades, I've been in towing. I was a firefighter before that for Baltimore City. That's how I got into towing, because I got hurt. So for the last three decades, though, I've been in legislation for the state of Maryland, throughout the state of Maryland, in towing. DOT in Baltimore City and the Tow Board, I've been promoting throughout this state because it was the finest way, we're in a complaint-driven industry. Nobody has us in their budget. Nobody ever wakes up saying, "Gee, I can't wait to see Charlie today." This doesn't happen. Nobody wants to break down, have their car repoed, have a flat tire, be caught trespassing on private property with signs that are 24 inches by 30 inches at a minimum and have to pay a fee. Nobody wakes up for that. So we're in a complaint-driven industry, and it's taken a lot of abuse over the years because of the horror stories. And those horror stories, though, in a, in a, in a industry that is well-regulated, especially through Baltimore City, let's not forget before 2012, when the state law 2110A included Montgomery County, who at that time allowed spotting, allowed signs to be 12 inches by 18 inches, didn't require contracts. They were forced to in 2012, when the Tow Board, along with the state law of 2110A, to which the Tow Board and the DOT has a representative, the finance department has a representative, the police department has a representative, the, I'm forgetting one, the property management has a representative, city council has a representative, private property management, thanks to, at the time, councilmen are... thanks to at the time councilman or comptroller today in 2011 passed the law, has a representative, and then a citizen-at-large has a representative. Which brings me to one of the issues I have on page eight, which is the makeup of the board in this bill. And I do oppose this bill. The makeup of the board. The director is a paid individual appointed by the mayor. Three of the individuals are appointed by the mayor. The other two, he's going to consult with the comptroller and he's going to consult with the council president. But he's still appointing them. There's nobody appointed to these boards that they want to take over and abolish. So that is one big problem I have. The other one on page 21, towers have to dispose of vehicles that are left or abandoned. The way this bill is written, we scrap these cars. We're not allowed to sell them. They get scrapped. We're not allowed to do anything with them, take parts of them. We have to transfer them to an ADR. The only way we're allowed to do that is through an MVA form and under state law. The police fill out those forms. We don't. So when you take the police commissioner out, is that going to affect the way we're able to get rid of the vehicles? We're not allowed to sell them. We can't do anything with them. We have to transfer them to a scrapper. So that was another concern. And I did read the whole bill. I did read the whole thing. But the only topic I'm going to talk about is the ones that affect Article 15, subtitle 22. I would like to see that stricken if this bill is to pass and a couple other things changed. But that whole bill, that whole section removed. The trespass tow board, when we talk about consumer protection, I just want to give a couple examples if I may. Trespass towing under the direction of the DOT and the trespass towing board, we are, have to be, no excuses, no exemptions, open 24/7 every day, every day of the year. There is no off time. There is no payroll that I'm not paying someone to sit in an office. There is no time that I'm not paying someone to be in a tow truck. In comparison, the private industry, they're not regulated at all. There is no regulations. There's no venting, there's no nothing. That includes repossessors and your road service. Anybody and everybody can work however they want and show up to help your loved ones at any time. There is no venting of those. We go through that venting along with the city towers. On the city tow side, as far as Pulaski Highway goes, they are open 49 and a half hours, closed on holidays, closed on Sundays. Falls Way is open 65 hours a week, closed on weekends, closed on holidays. Consumer protection, to me, sounds like the Tow Board trespass is doing a lot more. When it comes to drop fees, trespass towers are required, if an individual comes on to get their vehicle before the tow truck leaves, we have to offer to them at 50% of the impound fee rate that is registered with the Tow Board. City towers, not allowed to. As a matter of fact, they lose their license and they get fired. Consumer protection, sounds like the Tow Board through DOT is doing a lot more. Pictures, trespass towers are required to take pictures prior to removing a vehicle showing the violation. City towers, all they're required is there to be a ticket on the windshield. That's it. Nothing else. Reason I'm saying that is we have gone up and above the Tow Board, trespass Tow Board, made up of the seven individuals that are on it, to make sure that consumer protection is in first. Over the last couple of years, I have heard Montgomery County, I have seen bills come. Luckily, this committee alone has not forwarded one. The state senate this past year did not pass a bill. Their concern is the volators. Last time I checked, if I go into a store and I steal a piece of candy and I walk outside, am I a consumer or am I a violator? If I trespass on the private property under federal law, it's against the law. It's still a civil law, but it's still against the law. Am I a consumer? The business operations are protected under the consumer. On this board and this bill does not address any of that. What's in place now by Baltimore City and has been in place for over four decades, for over four decades, we have operated. Like I said, it's a complaint-driven industry. Nobody wants to get towed, but it happens. It happens. I'd hate to see it go into the hands of those that don't know our industry. The police do the venting, DOT does the inspections, and I heard earlier, they worry about cars. No. You have an impound lot in Baltimore City. Counties don't. City does. They know what we do. They know how we do it. They have the same equipment we have to remove cars off the public streets that we do off the private. The training's the same. The location of where the cars come from and where they go is the only difference. So DOT does have a big role in what we do in trespass towing. The fees. Inorona County has the highest fees in the state. They charge $380. I keep hearing how Baltimore City, Baltimore, no. Inorona County does. And like I said, it's a fee. It's a fee. Their licensing fee is the cheapest, but yet their punishment fee is one of the highest. It's not Baltimore City. I would ask that this committee please to, and I know I'm forgetting some things because I heard a lot going on and I just, I just hope that this committee will not allow this bill to go forward. And if it does, please remove trespassing, to abolish the trespass board. And like I said, and as a matter of fact, July 27th, House Bill 1002 that just got passed, Delegate Foley. And I was a big, like I said, I'm the legislative chairman. Guess what that is? It's a tow board for the state police to regulate pricing and procedures. Why? Because I kept pushing it. Delegate Foley, as I'm sure Councilwoman Ramos knows, last year she passed a bill that didn't include that. She listened, which was great, and we talked a lot. It's her idea, she wrote the bill. But the Tow Board, that Tow Board idea is, came from Baltimore City's trespass Tow Board. So I'd hate to see something that has been great. And to be honest, if I may, Councilman Dorsey himself served, he followed Councilman Curran on that Tow Board. During his term on that board, the highest tow rates ever approved was during his term. They were never that high. And luckily and gladly, they've gone back to what it should be, which is fair and reasonable. So let's keep the minds of the property owners, who are actually the consumers here. And let's leave the Tow Board where it is, under the guidance of the DOT and with the makeup that it is. I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Which actually prompts a question for me for the Law Department. When there's affirmative action taken, are the citizens who are the aggrieved in this case, do they recoup any of that money that's won in litigation?
I don't believe in the litigation and the administrative process. One of the remedies is to work out sort of a settlement, which could lead to giving money back to the consumer.
So the city would represent the consumers in those cases and give them back money and be their representatives, or would they need separate legal counsel?
I believe they would need separate legal counsel there. The city would be involved in order to enforce its, the violations of the new unfair deceptive and abusive trade practices and to collect the civil penalties that are imposed.
So I understand the civil penalties aside, that's sort of common practice with citations. But when it comes to litigation, so you have a group of aggrieved citizens because a business is not disclosing certain fees that they're charging. I think one of the examples that were given were like some of the ride-share apps or things like that, or the scooters, or whatever it is. So if they're not providing those, like that transparency and the Law Department or this parties go ahead and sue and recoup millions of dollars, and sue and win millions of dollars, where do, where do those millions of dollars go?
I believe the consumers would need to have counsel for restitution, sort of actions. The millions of dollars would be for penalties, which I believe could go to the general fund.
Gotcha. So the city, so the city's representative, the city is only going to sue, take the money that they get, throw it into the general fund, and the consumers are going to have to do their own thing?
Conversation about where that money could go could be further policy discussions. But at this point, yes, there's no mechanism for the city to be a people's counsel on behalf of aggrieved consumers.
Gotcha. So it's consumer protection to protect against bad practices, but the money recouped and the penalties that the businesses would be paying, that's the, that's the city, the city gets that cash. That's a, that doesn't sound like we're really, that we're really looking after the consumers the way we should. But next up is Thomas Showalter. Can you push the right button until you see the red light on your mic? There you go. You're on.
First of all, I want to say thank you all very, very much for allowing us to speak. I want to say upfront, I'm Tom Showalter. I've been a resident here in Baltimore 54 years. I was sitting on this Tow Board. I was on it for four years. We've done amazing things. Talk about protection of the consumer. The Tow Board had so many different variations, rules, regulations. We've been regulated more than I can imagine any county, state around. Again, Mr. Parrish said it best, we're 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we have to release vehicles. We're required to div drop fees, we're required to do so much. I think that gives a direct shot toward being consumer-friendly. For it to be abolished would be a hurt, I think, to the city. Meaning, again, 24 hours a day, we have to answer to a Tow Board, we answer to rules, regulations, pricing. I believe in my heart that you all should question why this councilman keeps taking potshots at the trespass towing. And that is allowed.
Well, this, just in all fairness, we're not, you know, we're not going to talk about any particular council person, but this bill addresses 25 different, different things. So let's just stay on topic as far as level of expertise or anything else you want to say on it. But there's not, this isn't singling out any one industry.
I got you. And I apologize for that. I don't believe the Tow Board being as long as it has been put there in place for consumers, it still does a great job. It always has done a fantastic job. We are rules-regulated. There's private industry that sits on it, there is consumers that sit on it, property managers that sit on it, DOT sits on it, the police department sits on it. We are, we are all about the consumers. I don't believe, by no means, it should be abolished at all, for whatever reasons it is. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you. Richard, if we can see if anybody online... Is she unmuted? I know, she can, she can speak if she likes.
[inaudible]
Okay.
Sarah?
If you hear your name called and you'd like to testify, just speak up.
Sarah.
Sarah, if you'd like to testify, please speak up. If not, we'll move on to the next one. Okay. Next one is, what's it say? Tiffany?
It's the President's desk.
Oh, okay. All right. Did we cover everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any, anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay. Now that we finally have a quorum, the previous administrative procedure bill, I see Legislative Reference has been waiting very patiently for this moment, and so we will afford you that moment. Let's first go through the amendments. Do we have a motion to approve the amendments provided to Legislative Reference on bill number 23-0354, Administrative Procedure Act? We have amendments on members' desks. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments?
To move.
Moved by Ramos. Do I have a second? Seconded by Conway. We'll take a roll call vote.
[inaudible]
The amendments.
Okay. On the amendments, Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. The man is absent. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Vice President is absent. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance is absent. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Four votes in the affirmative, no negatives. The amendment's passed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a bill number 23-0354, Administrative Procedure Act?
To move.
Moved by Ramos. Seconded by Conway. Okay.
Favorable with amendments, ready for roll call. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Banet is absent. Mr. Costello?
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair, what are we voting on?
Administrative Procedure Act at the request of Legislative Reference.
The first bill. Got it. I'm an aye.
The Vice President is absent. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance is absent. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are four votes in the affirmative, no negatives. This bill can go to second read at the August meeting.
Thank you. And so that was the first hearing that we had on bill number 23-0347. And even with the 25 amendments that were emailed to us, I think that only covers 10% of the needed amendments on that bill, so we will table that discussion for a future date. So we are now in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.